All right, good evening and welcome to the planning commission meeting of June fourteenth. I'd like to start this meeting by asking Steph for a roll call.
Yes, Chair Williams, Commissioner DeFever. Commissioner Woodward. Commissioner Amir.
Here.
And Chair Williams.
President.
And Commissioner Si is excused.
Oh, thank you, okay. Okay, so we'll turn to the oral communications portion of the agenda before we turn to our action items for this evening. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item that does not appear on the agenda tonight. We have no one with us in the audience at Town Hall, but there may be some people zooming in, so check on that.
I see no one in attendance for this item. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. Is there a staff briefing for us? Any updates on dates or upcoming events?
We will be holding on the last meeting of this month, which is June twenty eighth, right? On June twenty eighth, we will be having our CUP for the mini cows on Paradise. For now, that's the only item on the agenda. And I think that's probably about it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? No. All right, there, I see that there are no minutes for this evening. So we'll go straight to our one and only action item for tonight, which is our annual review of the draft five-year capital improvement program. And we'd love to hear a staff report on that.
David Eschew will be providing the staff report. He's putting together a presentation right now, making sure we can share the screen appropriately.
Terrific.
Okay, good evening, Chair Williams and Commissioners. David Eschew here with the Department of Public Works Engineering Department. And this evening, we will be going reviewing the annual capital improvement plan. So the review of the draft capital improvement plan is to confirm consistency with the goals and policies of the Tiburon General Plan, and this is required by California Government Code. The CIP identifies anticipated capital improvements and their funding sources for the next five years, but we are focusing on fiscal year twenty four. And the funding fund appropriation occurs annually through the budget adoption process, which Town Council heard last week. So with the capital improvement plan, we have a series of goals and policies for every project that we're bringing forward for this fiscal year twenty four. CIP's goals range from, you know, all the goals here under circulation, open space, conservation, parks and recreation and safety. And as I go over all the projects for fiscal year twenty four, I'll relay which general plan goal and policy they fall under. So for fiscal year twenty four, we have three groups of categories here for the projects. One is the street improvement projects. The other category is drainage improvement plans, and the third is community miscellaneous projects. I want to say a majority of these projects here focus on maintenance and repair and upgrades to our existing infrastructure with just a few of them that are just new projects that we want to bring forward. So we'll start with our first project here, and this is the pavement maintenance and rehabilitation project. This the general plan goal policies under circulation A. And what this project here will do will rehabilitate forty-four streets, street segments here in the Tiburon Peninsula. This year where we advertised for three projects, bids were opened on the twenty-fifth of May. We will be going to Town Council June twenty first to accept those three projects. One of them is a major paving project. The second one is just a slurry project, and the third one is a one-off project to rehab Eastview Avenue from Alcatraz to Alcatraz. The last time that street was rehabilitated was back in the eighties. So this will be a great project for the folks up there on Corinthian Island. The second project that we are looking at is the brick crosswalk rehabilitation analysis and design. As you're aware, we have a lot of brick crosswalks here that cross Tiburon Boulevard, even though Tiburon Boulevard is a state highway. We have an agreement in place with Caltrans that we will maintain those crosswalks. And as you've noticed, there's a lot of wear and tear, cracks, missing pavers, bricks through those crosswalks. So this sixty thousand dollars that we have assigned for fiscal year twenty four would be basically to analyze the crosswalks and come up with a plan to replace them. And what kind of material we should use? Should we go back to brick? Should we have paved stamped asphalt in there that's colored? Stamped concrete that's colored. So any type of different material in place of these existing bricks. So that's what this, that's what this project is all about, just an analysis to see what it's going to cost. The next project is the dairy knoll accessibility improvements. As you know, this falls under the safety C category. And this will upgrade the facility and bring it up to current ADA codes. That basically will mean doing an analysis to see what needs to happen out there as far as self-opening doors, anything in the restrooms, height of, of, you know, the facilities in there. So that's what, a simple project, but it needs to happen because it is the joint recreation building for Tiburon and Belvedere. Next project here is the Main Street seat wall maintenance project. So this project here, we already started, we have a consultant on board that we're using fiscal year twenty-three budget for to design and come up with a plan to rehabilitate the pier or the the piers that are underneath this bridge. They're deteriorating. There's exposed steel underneath it that the salt water has deteriorated throughout the years. So right now we are working on finalizing a a design to go out to bid here this fiscal year twenty-four for a maintenance project that will extend the life of Main Street. Moving on to the bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So here we're under circulation A, B, and C. This one here deals with an annual program for improvements throughout town for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Where Alec, the Town Council in the past has allocated fifty thousand dollars a year for public works to use at their own discretion to improve anything around town that's related to bicycle and pedestrian safety and facilities. Fiscal year twenty-three, we used almost all the funds or at least close to half the funds to improve the stairways that connects Raccoon Straight all the way up to Vestazo. We put a bike run all up there and repaired all the steps. And the remainder of the funds we used for a corridor pedestrian bicycle corridor safety analysis on Paradise Drive between the county limit line all the way up to Capri, Capri's restaurant there by sanitary district five. So we do have the study completed with some improvements in place that we will follow with our paving project. So basically installing striping signage, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon there at the crosswalk at the mini parking lot to help pedestrians cross safely through there. The next project is the annual fuel reduction project that we have in town for open space management. This year will be the first year that the town will be using goats all around Tiburon. We're anticipating the project to begin in July sometime after the fourth. For about three weeks, we'll have goats all around town helping us reduce fire risks and taking down some unwanted species that typically we use manual labor, but with the goats, we're going to have about four hundred goats out here and managed by a shepherd all around town. We have about twelve locations where they'll be deployed. And then once they complete their work, they'll be, they'll leave, and then we will have a second team coming in basically for cleanup work, whatever the goats have missed. So it'll be exciting to get them out here and have them do their work. The next project is a storm drain maintenance project. Again, this is an annual project that we do out here. Mainly, it's a lining project that we do. So we have a lot of corrugated metal pipes here in town that have deteriorated with a lot of voids in there. So what this project does is we have plastic liners that they put in into those pipes. And with steam, they expand them, and it's basically a hardened PVC within those corrugated metal pipes. It extends the life of the storm drain lines and basically moves, you know, stormwater during heavy rain events from top of the hill down into the bay. So we have our project that we went out to bid, opened up bids, May twenty fifth. Engineer's cost estimate was, I believe, five, close to six hundred thousand, it was five hundred ninety thousand, and our apparent little bidder came in at five ninety-three, so it was right there near the engineer's cost estimate. Town Council approved that project last month to move forward with, and the contractor will start on this project sometime in July. This is a unique project. It's the Lyford, Lyford Stone Tower property acquisition. It was brought to our attention that this tower, the property taxes in default. So we have the first right of refusal to purchase the land. So the land is owned by a private citizen here in Tiburon. But we do have an agreement in place where we do all the maintenance. So at this point, we may end up purchasing the property as well. So we'll own the property and also have the maintenance, continued maintenance as we do now. So we'll have more information on this as we move forward, but Public Works is working with the County Assessor's Office on all the steps involved in acquisition. The railroad march here behind us. Last time we had a project out here was in twenty fifteen. We just recently had one October of last year of twenty twenty-two. Those are some current pictures of the project back in October of last year. We removed about a hundred cubic yards of mass from their cattails. This project that went out to bid and opened up bids for probably, I think it was March when we opened up bids. It'll entail a much larger project. It'll be about almost two months long. We're going to remove close to four hundred cubic yards of material from there. And if you want to compare that to last October, if you did see the piles in the back here, that was about a hundred cubic yards. So it's about four times the amount, which will also, we're also going to be doing some dredging in there. So we have all our permits in place from the state and the water boards. So construction will start here September, I think, seventh, right after Labor Day weekend, and it'll continue on into October. We only can work in that March for two months out of the year for the months of September and October only. So we'll get this project up and running through that process. This one here is the McKegney Green pathway improvements. That you'll see that dirt pathway up there. Right above the soccer field McKegney Green. It's heavily used and it's unsafe. See a lot of kids on bicycles going through there. Every day we get, we have a lot of what's the word I'm trying to use DG, decomposed granite that is coming down into the pathway, which makes it's, you know, hard, dangerous for cyclists that go through there. So what we're trying to come up with here again, it's a design build project where we're going to have some type of switchback and a more of a permanent and stable pathway for cyclists and pedestrians to use. We do have an existing pathway that is just south of that, but it's recognized that everybody's using that path right there to get down to the soccer field for soccer practice and lacrosse. So we just want to make it safer for all users. So that's the project we're, we're looking at right now, currently getting proposals on design. This project has been on the books for a while. It's the Paradise Drive stabilization. It's a private parcel that has been for sale. Currently, the planning department did receive, I believe, some preliminary designs to look at. And what's happening here is the roadway is stable, but we need to bring it up to code, meaning update the retaining wall, put in you, some new soil nails, and just making sure that the roadway is stable prior to construction of the project. Because once they do construct, they're going to construct right to it, and we'll have no way of stabilizing the road. So we have this here because we've, we think that we're close to a planning project moving forward to build a nice house there. So in conjunction with their submittals, they will need to provide the town access to get in there and complete this stabilization project prior to construction of the home. The next project here is the Town Hall Facility Generator Transfer Switch. So we do have a generator here in place, a diesel generator. When power does go out, and it did happen a few times in the last couple of years during the brownout, the PCP, the PG&E shutdowns that we had, and our transfer switch is not very good, and it's caused a lot of issues here at Town Hall, burning the elevator motor, short-circuiting a lot of offices here with their equipment. So this right here will replace the switch that we have, making an automatic transfer switch so that if there is a a heavy load, it'll just shut everything down before we have any damage to any of our facilities. Moving on to the Police Department locker rooms. This right here will remove and replace lockers and flooring and fixtures throughout the police department, both facilities that they have out there, the male and female locker rooms. The locker rooms have outlived their useful life and met their current needs. So at this time, we're asking Town Council to approve this project to replace the lockers. Next project here is the Spanish Trail, Spanish Trail roadway stabilization. So during the twenty-two, twenty-three storms, winter storms, the roadway surface on Spanish Trail was observed to be subsiding. So this project here will basically just stabilize the road, and it would entail the installation of a retaining wall and improved drainage structures there at that location so that the road would, will not fail in any future storm events that we will have. So again, this will be a design and then construction all in the same year. The third, this next one is the Richardson Bay Sanitary District Pond Site Acquisition. Again, you are aware of this one. It's in our CIP. Our consultant currently prepared a closure, a package, sent it out to the state for review. The state did respond back to us with a few questions that were answered about two weeks ago, and we should have a closure plan sent back to the town and to RBSD for review here by the end of this month. And based on what they have in that closure plan, both the town and RBSD have the right to move forward or cancel the agreement. Again, the town can cancel the agreement if they don't agree to all of the mitigation measures due to cost. And RBSD has a right to rescind the contract as well if the state imposes additional mitigation on any of their existing facilities that aren't for sale. So if they ask them to, you know, to make improvements to some of their other facilities or to what they're currently, their current facilities that they're still retaining, and if the price is too high, they may say, well, we're not going to sell this. So at this point, we're just waiting on the closure plan to see what it entails, and we should have something back here in the next couple of weeks. This one here is the Police Department. Again, their flooring replacement is a project that'll just basically replace the flooring on the ground level. It's badly deteriorated. Laminate, you know, the laminate floors are coming apart, trip hazards. So that's just another project that we want to put together, move forward, is to replace the first floor flooring. Two more projects left here. This one here is the SNAP eight forty AM project and upgrades, radio upgrades. So everybody in town, in Murrin County in the peninsula is upgrading their SNAP radio equipment. And in order for Tiburon to also be able to communicate through this system, we have to do, have these upgrades here in our peninsula as well. So this is a project that basically it's an infrastructure project that we just have to upgrade our facility so that we can communicate with each other as well if you know, landlines go down, satellite lines go down, any, any type. This is just the AM radio that, that, that we use to, for communication during emergencies. And the last project that we have here are the Town Hall, is for the Town Hall Facility EV charging stations. So we would like to add some additional, we'll add, we do have existing EVs, the charging stations here, but they're for town-owned vehicles, but we want to add some vehicle charging stations at various town-owned facilities, not just the Town Hall, but you know, any, any facility where maybe at the ranch that we have out there as well. So we are looking, we applied for some grants. We're waiting to hear if we receive any of that grant funding through TAM. But we do want to move forward with additional charging stations, whether they would be at Town Hall, at the Ranch, Lyford Parking Lot by the school there, or even Blacky's Pasture. And again, what the recommendation for tonight is to adopt a motion, finding that the draft CIP is consistent with the goals and policies of the Tiburon General Plan. And I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. So it was an interesting presentation. Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. The, the bike, the bike path, I saw that you're doing the Tristle Glen. Is, is that also required to do work into the mountain there on the side because there's, or where, where's the, where's the bike path actually being put in Tristle Glen? Or is that, or did I miss?
Yeah, so the, the bike path is actually, it's an existing path that's there already. It is
Oh, you mean only, oh, but it's only going down.
It's only going down.
But not going up.
Not going up.
Oh, so you're not touching going.
We're not going, so it'll be a, almost a we may end up having a couple of switchbacks for ADA compliance. So it'll, it'll be similar to the existing concrete ramp that's behind the Portuguese mural.
Yep.
So it'll be something similar to that, we believe, just closer to the soccer field.
Right, no, that's the other thing. That's not the Tristle Glen. That's, that's just the the Tristle Glen is the one that goes from Tiburon Boulevard up to Paradise Drive. It's more the bike. It's more the biking. I guess it's where it would be.
Yeah, what?
It would be, be fall under, where would be the bicycle? I, I just saw, I think it's a, it's a bicycle cross. No, it's not the crosswalk. It's the bike, yeah, it would be the bicycle pedestrian.
Well, for the bicycle, no. So this bicycle pedestrian project for fifty thousand, that is just a simple fix of existing facilities that we have.
It's not new.
No, not, but I know which one you're talking about. We did apply for a grant a couple of years ago for that project to basically connect Paradise Drive to Tiburon Boulevard along Tristle Glen.
Right.
And the cost estimate came in a little over a million and a half for that project because we have to widen the shoulders. So right now TAM has, they put out a call for projects, again, the TDF grants, clean air grants. So we're going to apply again for this project, and hopefully we're competitive enough because we have preliminary plans already developed for this project. So we're currently trying to pursue grants to get that built, but it's not part of the current, that's not, not fiscal year twenty-four.
And then one other question, if I may, I mean, just the, the charging stations, is that, I'm curious, is that, is that free? Or is that where, is that revenue generating? When we put like an EV at the Knoll or, because obviously for for city cars or for, excuse me, town-owned cars, it's only for town usage, but this is not, so I'm curious.
Yeah, that is correct. So we're looking at partnering up with a couple EV charging companies. If we supply and install, basically bring electrical to those units, they will come in, install the EV charging stations and monitor all the payment, the payment program, and then the town will generate a portion of that for ourselves. So we don't plan on, you know, managing it. We're going to have a third party do it.
Good questions. Any others? Yes. Commissioner Woodward.
Yeah, maybe I can just follow up on a few things specific on the charging station line. I know we've got a number of charging stations around town already, including over the Belvedere Community Center. They have charging stations there. I think in general, the charging stations, two things. One have been underpowered so that you end up with cars that, if they really need to charge, are sitting there for eight, ten hours a day. And so, you know, if the goal is to try and get cars through, maybe just be, you know, thoughtful around the types of of how much power you bring to the, if you're going to do it. And then, secondly, you know, a big part of the goal is to have renewable energy. And so if we are bringing power, of course, it'd be amazing if we could have something tied to solar, tied to battery backup, whatever kind of the latest capabilities are. But I think as we're looking at the twenty forty plan and how those things get implemented, that, that is really important to just try and think about what we can do to be renewable in that, in that vein. And then just kind of broader questions, and I apologize if I missed a document. This is the first time that I saw a lot of the detail, well, all the detail, as it turns out. And I feel like in the past, we've gotten decks where they had all the details so we could actually review it in advance. So I was sort of furiously scribbling notes around the different amounts and stuff. It didn't really have a good basis to judge. But I guess my, so then the question is, you know, how do you prioritize? Because presumably there, I think I read fifteen million of projects. This is eight million of it. My guess is there's probably another twenty million in kind of like two, two come soon. You know, we just heard about one that Commissioner Amir brought, referenced from previously. So how does it get determined kind of like why the police station now is critical to do? Why not more funding on something else? Could I, just help me understand the background of how these items got in front of us?
Yeah, so in the past, pre-COVID, we used to have a ranking system. So we sent out basically a, a complete CIP project list, maybe a hundred projects. And we sent them out to different department heads, and they were ranked. Based on the rankings, we went to Town Council with the rankings from one to, you know, fifty or a hundred. And then we discussed all the projects at the council retreat. And then based on the outcome of the retreat, you know, Town Council would say, we like these thirty projects, and that's what we're going to move forward with. Well, the last couple of years, we haven't ranked them. We just, Public Works went to Town Council retreat with a list of projects that we felt were important and necessary. And then they were vetted at the retreat and Town Council at that point And then they were vetted at the retreat and Town Council at that point. Either said, you know, move forward with all these, or we don't like any of these, add. You know, this project in place. Um, but at this last retreat that we had in April, uh, Town Council did want to go back to the ranking system. Where we would go to them with uh what we felt like was ranked from number one to last. And then at that point, they would discuss uh all the projects and let us know which ones they wanted to move forward with.
Got, yeah, thank you. That's helpful. I think just for myself, it's to be able to put it in the context of uh the general plan and whether or not it conforms. Is relatively straightforward, but uh knowing that there are other projects and if we have a limited budget, then sort of saying. This one conforms, but there's probably other things that are more important. Um, back to that ranking. It's just helpful. So I was just trying to understand that better. I think I've got a good bill for it.
Absolutely. And 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 at the last council meeting, um. Town Council didn't approve uh our paving projects because of the cost. They can, they voted to continue the discussion to next week to basically vet more, you know, where we're spending, maybe. They may cut a few of these CIPs as well in order to uh pay for the uh. Astronomical asphalt costs that we have.
Thank you.
Commissioner De Fever.
Yes, so I have a question about the open space management plan. To what extent was that coordinated with the fire protection district or districts?
Uh, so uh, we do work, uh, Public Works, Public Works works closely with the uh Tiburon Fire District. Um, so I do know that there are a few grants moving forward or or that are available that the fire department will be applying for. Uh, we will be assisting them with these uh grants as well. Um, they do know the areas where we'll be deploying the goats, so we've sent that over to them. We work closely with the fire department. Prior to um uh this year, we would actually walk the areas with the fire department and prioritize where we would. Have our vegetation management. But last year, we developed a five-year short-term vegetation implementation plan. And we're following that program which touches every open space parcel in Tiburon, ranking them. Uh, with a priority list. Um, so it takes the guessing game out of it because I used to get calls from residents saying, you guys haven't been here in three years. No one's touched this place. So what we did is we felt that it was important to have this plan in place, basically a a book. That we can follow, um, which will touch all the parcels based on the species and the priorities and the importance of. How we need to get in there and clear the vegetation. But one thing that is in place is that every year. We will be clearing up all of the fire roads, the important fire roads that the fire department needs. Uh, to make sure that they're clear and open uh for any type of access, emergency and or recreation. Uh, but uh. What we have. Uh, budgeted for open space isn't nearly enough what we need. Um, I believe that, you know, we're, we're right around the two hundred fifty thousand a year. Um, in order to basically get to where we want to get, you know, we we're looking at. Close to about a million and a half to two million dollars to actually. Get to ground zero and then maintenance. So these grants that I'm gonna be working with the police, with the fire department with will. Really help supplement uh getting us up to that next level um of getting our vegetation under control.
Is the plan, the implement implementation plan with the priority list available to the public?
Yes.
How is that obtained through town staff or?
Yeah, you can, yeah, uh, through town staff. We did go to Town Council uh for the approval. And through posts, so it's it's, we've had uh uh public meetings on it, but uh. I'm not sure if it's posted online yet, but we can definitely send it, send the uh short-term implementation plan over to you. It's it's not very long. It's about thirty-five pages of of really actually interesting and good reading. Um, and it lays out the next five years of what we're going to be doing here at the town.
That that would be great to see. I get a lot of questions about open space management and fire protection, given the neighborhood that I live in, but also in general, what I do for a living. So I'm going to read it. I I will find it interesting. Let's see, uh, gosh, you answered my sub-questions in what you just explained. I had some sub-questions set out here, but that was very thorough. Uh, my other question was. The two thousand two Paradise Drive site. Uh, that that's very interesting that the owner owns the land. Uh, it, do we not have an easement to just go in and and change? What do you, are you trying to replace that um bridge, roadway bridge or?
So there's a, there's a retaining wall there that's holding paradise up that needs to be. Uh, beefed up, brought to current standards. And in order for our contractor to get in there, we would need a right of entry. And the old design that we have currently for that project that was designed about ten years ago, half the design is on private property. So we are revising that so all of the improvements are on town right-of-way. Um, and brought up to new current codes, seismic codes. Um, the the bridge is still stable. It it's it's not gonna go anywhere, but we want to get in there before the development. Because once they start developing and their driveway connects basically to our, they're not gonna connect to our retaining wall, but they're gonna build their retaining walls above them right next to ours. We won't have any more access to get in there. And then if we do want to make repairs, we would have to close the road. Excavate all of Paradise Drive, that section, just to make repairs. So we just want to get in there before they start their development.
Um, is that the property next to the Caprice or is that a different two thousand two? Is it around the peninsula? Because the picture didn't look the same.
I think it's close to that.
So it's, there's Caprice and there's an apartment building and then it's the one next to that. So it's not immediately adjacent.
Okay, I've seen.
We we had a very preliminary, but a very preliminary application, hasn't gone any further. It was deemed incomplete. Um, but what I think we're trying to do is figure out kind of the timing of the repair as well as the development, so.
I think I saw a note in the presentation in that um section that the, just you had, did not have permission from the owner to enter.
Correct.
Right of entry was not provided.
Not provided. So we're making it a condition of approval that they would have to allow Public Works to get in there and complete this work.
So it's a bit of a workaround has been required.
Safety first.
Yes.
Um, yeah, that that was, that those are all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that my fellow commissioners asked really good questions. I don't, I don't feel like I can uh top those questions or I don't really have any uh additional ones. You did a nice job um through the presentation. Um, and I noticed it seems like this is a streamlined um list that we have this year and past years. We we have had a longer list, but it just sounds like you've been doing the work to uh prioritize and and really focus on those near-term projects. That are either funded for the current fiscal year or coming up in the next five years and are likely to be. Uh, but budgeted. Um, so yeah, thank you. Um, I think we can just get started on our, yeah.
You probably need to open up if anybody has comments, right?
Oh, on action item, um.
It's not a public hearing.
It's still public here. You still need to open up for public comment. Thank you. Um, so I will open this item up for, now that the commissioners have asked questions and and uh provided some preliminary comments. Oh, open this up for the public, for public comment. There is no one in the audience tonight, so I'll check in with Director Tassini on.
I see no one online as well.
Okay, I will close the public comment period and return this back to the commission for um just our uh discussion and uh. Uh, and I'm happy to. I'll start where we started with questions, Commissioner Ramirez.
Yeah, um, so first of all, thank you. Thank you for coming here tonight and kind of presenting us. I mean, this is a. Um, I think I've probably done this multiple times, but at this point over the years, um, and uh. It's uh, I do remember the bigger packets uh that we used to have uh as well. Uh, yeah, I think that this is uh, the way I see it is, look, this looks very consistent to kind of our general plan. Um. Um, definitely the the focus on um. You know, the the focus on the electrical vehicle part is is definitely part of thoughts of uh alternative energy. Um, bringing up the code on the ADA, I think is is something that we've talked about over over the years. Um, and uh, a lot of the improvements uh that are more beyond just the obvious of the pavement of the roads and and the bicycles. But some of the uh, some of the thoughts around the marsh basin, I think is uh, is in, is um. Is something that's definitely, I think, a big, a a big improvement as well. Um, in addition to um, you know, Police Department and things like that. So. Um, I'm, you know, I I I definitely think that it's very consistent to general plan and, you know, I think it's done some great work here. So I really, this point, um, um, no point of elaborating.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward.
Uh, yeah, I I echo those sentiments from Commissioner Amir. I appreciate uh Mr. Issue that you shared the goals upfront. It's always helpful to kind of um tie those back. And clearly, I think these are well-aligned with that. Um, you know, and just appreciate you going through in detail each of them. I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Commissioner De Fever.
I feel the same way. Uh, it's very clearly laid out which general plan and policy is supporting each project. Um. And I've I've checked them each. They all make sense. Uh, that is our job to make sure that any of these um. Policies fall under the general plan and they most certainly do. And I commend you for, you know, I know it's very hard work to choose which ones are the most important and uh. Keep them in budget, et cetera, et cetera. And I commend you for the excellent work that has been occurring, not just this year, but the years in the past as well. Uh, and also just a. Well, maybe slightly personal note, given what I do for a living, the open space management, I'm really happy to see a lot of attention being placed on that. Uh, I know that the fire danger in Tiburon is lower than most of Marin County due to our location and the way the wind. Uh, moves on the peninsula. Um, but still, um, people are very concerned about that. So I really, really love to see that there's. Uh, in my opinion, a fairly aggressive plan to get that taken care of. So this is really wonderful. And thank you for putting that together and I look forward to reading.
I do too, actually. I'd find it, I'll find it very interesting as well. Um, well, I can agree with my fellow commissioners. I think uh, not only does this meet the goals and policies of the general fan. Planet sort of falls squarely within the general plan. Is the general plan coming to life? You know, this is the town. Um, staff and directors and and everyone working together to to uh keep our town um safe and beautiful and accessible and. And so I'm just always excited by this uh review every year and I love the questions that come up and. Uh, so thank you for putting this together for us and making it so clear. Um, and I do, I just think it's a really nice opportunity for us to acknowledge the hard work that gets done all year long by everybody. Um, uh, you know, with within uh, working for the town. Uh, because it's, it often happens kind of above us, below us, around us, and we don't even notice it. And I think that means you're doing an uh exceptional job. Uh, and we're very, very fortunate, I think, um, to to have this, um, to have that. So I um. I think I, if if I may, I will, um, not only will I entertain a motion, but I'll just make the motion, finding that the draft um. Uh, capital improvement plan um is consistent with the goals and policies of the Tiburon General Plan. And I'll ask for a second.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? I, motion carries. Uh, and um, I will call this meeting adjourned.